Good evening, everyone. The executive session of the Wayne Board of Education Reunion Meeting, April thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, was convened in the conference room of the Wayne Board of Education, fifteen Ellis Drive, Wayne, New Jersey. Statement of Compliance said according to daytime location was read in accordance with requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act, and a roll call was taken. The meeting was recessed and is now being reconvened. Roll call, Mr. Martin.
Mr. Marshall.
Yes.
Mr. Patel.
Here.
Mr. Giardano.
Here.
Mr. Kazan.
Here.
Mr. Pavla.
Here.
Mr. Prasakos.
Present.
Mrs. Grigoloso.
Here.
And Mrs. Wunty.
Here.
At this time, I would like to ask everyone to please stand for the flag. Followed by a moment of silence. First, I ask, I ask not to hold back, but to flag, it is appreciated.
So, regarding the moment of silence, on Friday, March thirty-first, Wayne Hills tragically and unexpectedly lost two members of junior class, Christian Enrico and Liam Thomas Saroyk, and some of the staff members of Wayne Hills, put together a short tribute, this moment of silence, to share a little bit more about Christian and Liam. Christian was a kind-hearted, fun-loving student. Christian always looked and asked about how your day was going, and wished you the best whenever leaving the classroom. His sincerity was genuine, he enjoyed gaming, and was very focused on building his skills in jiu-jitsu. Liam was full of energy, and his curiosity always led him to question the how and the why. Like Christian, Liam loved gaming, as well as Avengers movies, and he had a unique skill that he knew every line of every movie and could recite each line back from the beginning to the end of the movie. Liam was an integral part of the Wayne Hills swim team. His coach, Ms. Bayless, shared that as a versatile athlete, he was able to swim all the strokes. He also excelled as a sprinter and became one of the keys to the team's success. Additionally, Liam brought a unique sense of humor to practices and meets, always making his teammates and coaches smile. Both young men had a passion for their auto plans. Mr. Hopper, their auto teacher, shared that it was a privilege to have Liam and Christian as students in his auto program. Both boys will be dearly missed by the Wayne Hills community. Please take a moment of silence to remember our forever patriots, Liam and Christian.
At this time, we'll salute the flag. Flag allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Please be seated.
We'd like to start our meeting with one of the annual highlights of Board of Education, Music Honors Recognition Program. Board has for many years taken the time to recognize student achievement in their instrumental and vocal music programs. As you will hear, the arts are alive and well in Wayne County public schools. Congratulations to all of our students, our music teachers, especially Mr. Paterno, Mr. Bateese, Mr. Palomba, Mr. DeWilde, Mr. Puzak, Mrs. Skilikado, Miss Medley, and Miss Russelbiello, Mr. Vigletti, and Mr. Vogel. And of course, the parents who have supported you and your music education for many years. Mr. Paterno.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Matt Paterno, and I have the pleasure of kind of being the elder statesman of the music department. Dr. Norman Vincent Pio once said, "What the mind can conceive and believe, and the heart desire, you can achieve." Tonight, the Wayne Township Schools Music Department has been given the opportunity to honor the achievements of our music students and ensembles who have done that on the highest level. Thank you to our school administration, Board of Education, the Wayne community, for taking the time tonight to allow us to present these honors. The incredible resilience, dedication, pride, and accomplishment that these students have shown in both the preparatory process and performance setting are tested into their individual character. These students have learned the skills and knowledge taught to them in the Wayne Schools music program and taken it out into the world. Although we honor these musicians as secondary-level musicians, it is extremely important to acknowledge our elementary music teachers who gave them both their start and their love of music. A special thank you to Nurya Kira for putting together tonight's program, and for the wonderful certificates that the students will receive. We'd like each student, as their name is called, to come up, shake hands with their administrators, and then they can sit back down. I'd like to turn the program over now to Ms. Doon for the Anthony Wayne Middle School students.
So, on behalf of myself and directors, Mr. DeWilde and Mrs. Skilikado, who cannot be here tonight, I'd like to recognize the following Anthony Wayne Band students. Audi Ruth Tanyu Tu鲁, for alto saxophone, North Jersey Junior Area Band, and alto saxophone, North Jersey Region One Concert band. Roman Robotham, euphonium, North Jersey Junior Area Band. Amber Nguyen, clarinet, North Jersey Junior Area Band. Vior Bati, trumpet, North Jersey Junior Area Band. Vincent Taranina, percussion, North Jersey Junior Area Band. Chloe Meyer, flute, North Jersey Junior Area Band. I now turn it over to Nick Vigiletti from George Washington.
Yes, I'm Nick Vigiletti from George Washington Middle School, the band director. I would like to recognize the following sixth graders from my sixth-grade band for their participation tonight. First up would be Ashton Alvarado.
Elizabeth Pandora, clarinet, North Jersey Region One Elementary Honor Band. Kira Lu, flute, North Jersey Region One Elementary Honor Band. And Angela Prasakos, teter saxophone, North Jersey Region One Elementary Honor Band. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Dennis Puzak, the band director from Scott Little Fox.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mr. Dennis Puzak. I'm the band director from Scott Little Fox Middle School. It is my pleasure, on behalf of Mrs. Palomba and Mr. Vogel, to award each of the following students their honors band and honors choir certificates. First, we'll start with Gayon Ju, flute, North Jersey Junior Area Band. Next is Cameron Perez Alcalde, trumpet, North Jersey Junior. Next are choir students. Evi On, soprano II, North Jersey Intermediate Region Treble Choir. It is now my pleasure to introduce Mr. Gabriel Bateese, Wayne Valley High School Band.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here. I actually have two shameless parts before we begin. As Mr. Puzak said, I am Mr. Bateese's director of bands at Wayne Valley High School. First is, this year is actually the first year of the North Jersey Region One Elementary Honor Band, where Mr. Vigiletti had students go in, and the conductor that was selected for that ensemble is our very own, and my wife, Mrs. Christina Bateese, director of band at James. The second is, many of our students from Wayne Valley cannot be here tonight, is a dress rehearsal for our musical, so a little bit of a shameless plug. If you want to come this weekend and check out Little Women at Wayne Valley High School, it'll be opening tomorrow night, and then next weekend you can go see Pippin at Wayne Hills High School, and a lot of art teachers here who are playing and participating in that. So, there's some names that nobody will come up, and there's some that will, so we'll recognize those people. First is Daniel Cho for making the North Jersey Area Band Wind Ensemble. Roberto Cisneros, who is currently doing sound at our main valley dress rehearsal for making the North Jersey Area Band Wind Ensemble. Zoe Urkin for making the North Jersey Area Band Symphonic Band. Lois Laura, who is also doing sound at our dress rehearsal for making the North Jersey Area Band Wind Ensemble. This is a student I'm very proud of, and it's quite a list of accomplishments. She's actually not with us today, but she's in Rochester, New York, with the All Eastern Band, performing at Eastman Conservatory of Music. So, this is for Isabel Millman for making the Region One Wind Ensemble, the All-State Wind Ensemble, the All Eastern Band, the All National Band as an alternate, and NJAE State Festival Outstanding Soloist, Region One Concert Band Festival Outstanding Musician, Eastman Conservatory Summer Saxophone Institute Participant, Navy Band International Saxophone Symposium Participant, two-time Haddo Winsiphony Young Artist Scholarship Winner, and one of two students selected for the New Jersey Governor's Award in Arts and Education. Another student who I'm very proud of, who has a long list of accomplishments, cannot be with us tonight, Nicholas McHale for making the NJSMA Region One Jazz Band, the NJMEA All-State Jazz Band, the North Jersey Area Band Wind Ensemble, the NJSMA Region One Wind Ensemble, the NJMEA All-State Symphonic Band, Jazz House, accepted as in the Jazz House Kids Pre-Collage Big Band, NJAE State Festival Outstanding Soloist, and Charles Mingus National Competition Outstanding Soloist, where he was invited to visit Jazz Club in New York to play with their big band. So, Nicholas McHale. Alexandee, who is here with us tonight, for making the North Jersey Area Band Symphonic Band. Skylar Wender for making the North Jersey Area Band Symphonic Band. Tyler Westerberg, who is currently doing sound at our dress rehearsal time, for making the North Jersey Area Band Symphonic Band. On behalf of Ms. Lisa Rucinello, our choir director, I'll be recognizing the choir students from Wayne Valley as well. Eugene Palabres for making baritone NJSMA Intermediate Region One Mixed Chores. Adriana Sercolin for being selected soprano I NJSMA Region One Treble Choir. Madeline Olmert for making soprano I NJSMA Region One Treble Choir. Charlotte English being selected for soprano II NJSMA Region One Mixed Choir. And Grace Resizer being selected for alto II NJSMA Region One Treble Choir. And lastly, we have two program recognitions. We have a lot of students that are unable to audition for these honors ensembles, who work very hard in our curricular and actual precurricular ensembles. The first one is Wayne Valley Jazz Band, who in two weeks will be traveling to La Tuchin High School, perform at Division Three State Finalists, so this is their fifth year in a row as Division Three State Finalists. And then our Wayne Valley Symphonic Band for receiving a song rating at the NJ and SMA Concert Band Festival at West Essex only two weeks ago. So, congratulations to those two. Turn the program over to Mr. Matthew Turnoff of Wayne Hills.
Thank you very much. First, we would like to recognize Sisters Helena Kim and Sophia Kim, who performed with the Chamber Music Society Lincoln Center's Young Musicians New York Region Contest on piano. Next, we have Sean Mobius, who performed on baritone saxophone with the Caldwell University Next, we'd like to recognize Marcus Ives, who performed on bassoon with the Caldwell University Honors Band and the New Jersey Region One Symphonic Band. Next, we have Kevin Hart, who performed on trumpet with the Caldwell University Honors You've become a parent of a lot. Okay, good, thank you. Thank you, we appreciate that. Next, we have Noah Kim, also a trumpet player, who performed at the North Jersey Area Symphonic Next, we have Samuel Dorpin, who performed on percussion with the North Jersey Area Symphonic Next, we have Mr. Aaron Schwartz, who performed on soprano clarinet with the North Jersey Next is Mr. Joe Catalano, performing on bass clarinet with the North Jersey Area Next is Juliana Steer, who performed on oboe with the North Jersey Area Region, or North Jersey, excuse me, Region One Symphonic Band. Next is Brandon Halli, who performed on trombone with the North Jersey Area Symphonic Band and the North Jersey Region One Symphonic Band. Next, Miss Erin Han, who is performing with flute on the American Music Abroad European Tour this summer. And last, but certainly not least, Adis Pelagi, who is performing on trumpet again with the American Music Abroad European Tour this summer. Our few program highlights from Wayne Hills, our Patriot March Band, this fall received the gold rating at the New Jersey Music Educators State March Band Festival, also won Best Color Guard and bronze medal at the Tournament of Bands Division Three-A State Championships. Our Window Symphonic Band just recently participated at the Region Symphonic Band Festival over at West Essex, and received the gold rating and won Best Brass for the Day. And our Patriot Five Ensemble, we like to, it's five students, it's run by Mr. Steve Sullivan, but this ensemble has been out in the community visiting assisted living and other type of facilities, just bringing music to our community, so we appreciate them as well. Before I close, I know I speak for the rest of our teachers, our students, I even think the parents, giving a huge thank you to our Board of Education, our school administration, for the recent substantial investment you made with the lead instrument lease purchases for our secondary. It puts our students, it gives them the best possible equipment to use as they're competing against students from other schools. It gives them the inspiration to use equipment like this, and it's sincerely appreciated by the teachers, I know by the students, and it really does make us a first-class program in Wayne, so we're very, very proud of that. Thank you. So, congratulations to all the students we've honored here tonight, and we hope that through your musical achievements, you have come to realize that, as Vincent van Gogh once said, "Great things are done by doing a series of small things." Thank you again to everyone for allowing us to honor these students and the ensembles tonight.
Just briefly, congratulations to all our students, and thanking parents for what you do, for the hours you give to the new students, taking them to wherever they have to be in North Jersey, wherever. One thing I have to say as a board member who's been here a little while, that I have seen the evolution of the music program firsthand, and watched it as Mr. Paterno's vision was to bring it out in the elementary school. And by the time these, our kids get up to high school, these gentlemen in middle school have done such a great job, they can now take students to levels that most, most school districts in the state care not. So, I thank you, gentlemen, ladies, and thank you as well. We'll take a five-minute break, and then we're going to reconvene the meeting.
And can we get all of the honorees right up over here? All the students.
All people in the back, like all the tall people. All the teachers in the back, too. Squeeze in, squeeze in, squeeze in. Squeeze, make a new friend. How's that, Mr. Parents? Take lots of pictures. And then, parents, if you just let us know when you're done, so Mr. Parents can take one. Squeeze, squeeze. Squeeze. Okay. Mr. Parents, say when, we'll ask for it.
Parents, sit down for me, please, real quick. One piece of paper, there we go, everybody, right here, right here, look at me, here we go.
It's been a pleasure. Nice job.
Perfect. Congratulations.
Congratulations, guys.
Parents, sit down for me, please, real quick. One piece of paper, there we go, everybody, right here, right here. Look at me, here we go.
Man of pleasure.
Nice job.
Perfect. Congratulations.
Congratulations, guys.
Congratulations.
So the same thing, I'm going to keep my report brief, recognizing the public reports that we shared. To take a moment to discuss public works, session item K1, which has to do with Mr. Founder and recommendation I have to use to emergency day, emergency day on June 6. Today, there will be two emergency meetings if we're not to catch it. June 6 is Election Day in New Jersey. Six of our schools apparently use holding locations. A new law signed by Governor Murphy, police officers are no longer permitted to stay in with a non-fearful building place, or valid drop-in. This means six of our schools will be open to the public to judge police protection. Also, previously, the Jersey Department of Education admitted schools that were holding locations to hold remote data instruction. This is no longer an option. Minimum day on June 6, June 6 is expected to be a minimum day of remote instruction. Knowing what we know now, we do have a need to make a change for our calendar for next year for election day. Although it appears that there was an effort in assembly to peel back some parts of this new law, which prevents police holding locations. That effort was unsuccessful. It allowed police only to be at a school in the event there's an active threat against the school building, a dead fight by law enforcement agency. That would be to school closure anyway. So note that Agenda Item K1 is a public work session item. There's no final action being taken by the board, so I agree with the additional discussion. On another note, congratulations to all varsity sports teams for a great start to the season. Also a reminder, please come out this weekend to see Wayne Valley High School Theater Program for Action of Little Women. There's three shows, Friday and Saturday are evening shows starting at 7:30 p.m. On Sunday, Monday starts at 2 p.m. Finally, a reminder to all residents, please sign up for our weekly newsletter. This week's edition is packed with 28 stories about our students and staff. It's certainly worthwhile, thank you. Oh, the HIV report. Yes. Okay, so as far as the HIV report goes, reporting the following data related to harassment, intimidation, and bullying incidents in the township Public School District. There have been 28 incidents of HIV that were investigated since the last report. Ten of those cases were deemed to meet the criteria of actual HIV incidents.
Mr. Bob, positions to adjourn, please.
There are a few tonight. On the PWS section, we have under M, Human Resources, M5, approval of revised job description. We will be removing number 1, which is B-403 Principal Secondary, and number 2, B-453 Assistant Principal Secondary. Moving on further, under T, again, action items for tonight, emergent. Items, item number T2, which is approval of leave request, will revise number 12. Employee ID number 8305, unpaid leave with benefits. That is April 14, 2023, through June 30, 2023, pointed to another position. Moving on to X, emergent, under legal, we'll be adding a few tonight. Number 1 is, X1 is approval of settlement agreement and mutual release. Recommended action reads as follows. Resolve that Board of Education upon the recommendation superintendent hereby approves a settlement agreement and mutual release dated April 7, 2023. OAL dot give number EDU 09400-22. Agency reference number is 254-922, as attached by reference. And further authorizes the Board President and Secretary to execute the same on behalf of the Board. The Business Administrator and Superintendent are authorized to take all further steps required by the terms of the settlement to further implement the same. I will add X2, which is approval of HIV determination. That action reads as follows. Resolve that the Board affirm the Superintendent's decision on HIV case number 121A/2022-2023. Following appeal as required by NJSA 18A 37-15 (B) (6) (E). We'll add X3, which is approval of suspension. Recommended action reads as follows. Resolve that the Board affirm the Superintendent's decision on suspension of student ID number 1434774671 as required by NJAC 6A 16-7.3. And finally, adding X4, approval of settlement agreement and general release. That action reads as follows. Resolve that the Board of Education upon the recommendation superintendent hereby approves of the settlement agreement and release in the matter of student ID number 6373554692. OAL docket number EDX 11510-2022. Agency reference number 2023-35132, as attached by reference. And further authorizes the Board President and Secretary to execute the same on behalf of the Board. The Business Administrator and Superintendent are authorized to take all further steps required by the terms of the settlement to further implement the same. That concludes the additions to tonight's agenda.
Thank you. Let's get a mover to open the room. Some of the public.
Sorry.
This is Kazan Tal. This portion of the meeting is open to citizens for comment on Agenda Items only. Residents are asked to state their name and address the subject matter. Comments may be limited to three minutes per person. Members of the public are discouraged from speaking negatively about an employee or student. The Board bears no responsibility for comments made by the public. Comments regarding employees or students cannot be legally responded to by the Board. Other comments may be responded to tonight, but subsequent media will involve this. Anyone from the public should speak on Agenda Items.
Mr. President, seeing nobody present, we will close. Thank you.
Tal, I'm Spanish. Committee reports, a couple committees meet tonight, education.
Yes, the Education Committee met with Matt Giordano, Barbara Frigilosa, and Donna Reichman in presence, and myself. We reviewed the January 30, 2023 Education Committee Minutes. So we reviewed the March 2, 2023 Education Committee Minutes. We had on the agenda Skylar Kofax Middle School TV Broadcasting Course, which is, looks very great and interesting. We reviewed our residency at Wayne Valley, Wayne Valley Design and Pathway for Fashion Design Course. We discussed the district mission statement, which there will be more discussions to follow. So it will be on the agenda for next time as well. We also reviewed the calendar update for tonight's meeting. And we reviewed the calendar for 2324, which will be on the next Agenda for the Education Committee as well. And we approved or reviewed the volunteer club for Wayne Hills High School. And then we also discussed enhancements to the health education curriculum at today's meeting, which will continue at next meetings as well. Thank you.
Questions?
Yes. I do actually have a question. At the last meeting, there was a motion made, and it was regarding the mission statement. I just want to give some background on how that mission statement came to be. It was a collaborative effort, which was part of the Board goal a couple years ago. The mission statement was written by a group that contained members of the community, members of the faculty, members of the administration, and members of the Board. So here's my issue. Why is it being discussed in a Board committee without any three of the Board members? This is the exact opposite of what sounded to me like what Mr. Batterhill wanted, that this should be a committee decision. That's not a committee decision. And I also just want to read it real quick, because I'd also like to ask, since Mr. Batterhill made the motion, a few questions. Okay. Wayne Township Public School District is strengthened by the collective efforts of its community to raise informed, inquisitive, and compassionate members of society. We are committed to delivering a culturally responsive, critically engaging curriculum for students of all backgrounds. We provide instruction that is academically rigorous and affirms the humanity and dignity of all learners. We are dedicated to a constant evaluation of our current systems and policies and enact necessary changes to ensure equity and opportunity for all. Under the guiding principle that education is a human right, we provide students with equitable access to education that empowers them to positively engage in our democratic society and contribute to the global community. Can't find a problem. I really would like to know, why are we reconsidering it? Maybe since you made the motion, Mr. Batterhill, you've changed some life. I've received no outward changing, so I'm confused.
I'd be happy to respond to that. There have been a number of times that people have raised the mission statement, especially things like your values, the values to your bare forehand, and the same questions you're asking now, and why previous one was previously changed. I believe that doesn't need to be changed. I've asked to change it, I've asked to do it, I've asked to take a look at it, I asked for public comments and feedback. So far, I haven't actually seen that much coming in from the public. One, two, actually externally have come through to me during that time, which I passed on to the Education Committee. And I believe that they should take a look at those. And I don't think we should make a decision within the Education Committee. I think we should make and inform the public decision just issues. And I believe that that's the right approach to do, right? But we need to start somehow with that. And I think that that's a good place. And if that, if we're coming back and it's that everybody's happy with the kind of work, I am fine with that. That's a good community movement that I've raised. It's a motion was to make sure that the community knew that this is something that people want to be in a position to engage in.
You say wait. And I bring this up yet again, because you brought that up at a public meeting as a motion with none of us anticipating or expecting it or prepared to even have this conversation. I didn't even have this mission statement in front of me to discuss it. And this is a work session. And that's where we talk about these things openly amongst all of us, not in a committee of three. So again, I don't see anything wrong with this. It does talk about values and raising good citizens, so I'm confused. But I think the Board might want to rethink how we approach these situations, because this was not a Board decision to begin with. This is why we have agendas. This is why we have committees to move things forward to the agenda, so we can have a discussion, not just one person deciding it's time to address this. Because again, I have heard nothing from the community, nothing. So I'm curious to see where we're going to go from here.
I am happy to address. So we just discussed what the plan forward would look like. We have not made any decision, except that we reviewed some mission statements from other areas as well. We talked about creating something of our profile of the Wayne graduate and just playing up a beautiful picture of what our students will, or who they are and, you know, what they expect to achieve. So we're looking for a nice plan. It is not something that obviously we're going to do without input of public and the Board. And if we were discussing that we will possibly do it as a goal. But we wanted to find out more information before we bring it to the Board for, you know, decision-making and approval. So this is just having a conversation and finding out more information of how we can enhance our public image, including the mission statement, and have a profile of the Wayne graduate also available for the public.
And what do we do next year when there's different graduates? Can we change it every year?
No.
We do, we do an annual book with all the graduates and their achievements. That's, that's a separate thing that we do every year. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Tell us where this is going.
Technology Committee?
Sure. So Mr. Joe Barchard, myself, and Mike Tal, all meant to discuss the Technology Committee. We went over a number of issues, achieving those. There was the contact methods on the website, which was raised as a public comment to the Board, we missed this. And I'm pleased to say that we've gone through and made sure that all of the email addresses are accessible directly on the page, including instructions for those. We're also looking to add a direct link there that will take you directly to the Board page for Let's Talk, which will enable you to directly contact all of the members of the Board through Let's Talk. Without needing to go through many steps to be able to get there, or cop out, or review individual emails to be able to get there. So that will make you both contact individuals or groups that you all remember, always be able to put it through Let's Talk to contact everybody. So I think that that's a good thing. It was raised a number of times on how the link doesn't work in a number of different situations and so on. This makes it a lot more transparent and easy for the public to be able to contact us. And we also started looking into the potential of getting a supervisor of educational technology to be able to come on and work with the technology. department and help train some of the teachers and increase the technological areas throughout the district. So we're still making a decision on that one, although that's another job description.
Thank you. Finance, Mrs. Kazan?
Thank you, Mr. Patlike.
Fortunately, Mr. Rusakos had to leave, so we just need to take the house. It's Easter week. Meeting minutes, we discussed from the March 2nd meeting. We discussed items on the agenda, most of which are proprietary or you can read it for yourself. The only items of note were withdrawal from the Capital Reserve, which is for a data center that's going to be part of the work that's being done in 50 Ellis Drive. Future board actions were meal prices, insurance rates, and professional services, which will carry over to the next meeting. No decisions made on any of those for looking forward. Department move update was given, because like I just mentioned, there's work going on at 50 Ellis Drive or Central Office. So we're, for the rest of the summer at least, or foreseeable few months, a mixed bag of virtual and in-person working for the business office and the departments. We had an update on the 23, 24 school budget. We're still waiting for approval from the county on that. And so far, we've only received one Board member question for the budget. So tick tock, it's pretty much past the point where we rarely make any substantive changes. So if any of those questions are still lingering out there, now we've got time to put them on the page that we've set up for that purpose. Oh, and I forgot to say who was there. Myself, Mr. Rusakos, Mr. Patlike, and Mr. Whitey.
Do I have a mover for the agenda?
Mr. Fataal?
Comments, questions, questions?
I'm sorry.
President, I hope we've got a second. Mr. Kazan? Thank you, sir. Start the beer. Questions, open. Mrs. Wenting?
Yes.
Mr. Batterfield?
Yes.
Mr. Fataal?
Yes.
Mrs. Kazan?
Yeah, you're here.
Mrs. Rigoloso?
Yes.
And Mr. Patlike?
Yes.
Motion carries. The motion to open to the public?
I'll move.
Mr. Fataal, this portion of the meeting is open to citizens for comment on any topic. Residents are asked to state your name, address, and subject matter. Comments may be limited to five minutes per person. Members of the public are discouraged from speaking negatively about an employee or student. The Board bears no responsibilities for comments made by the public. Comments regarding employees or students cannot be legally responded to by the Board. Other comments may be responded to tonight for a subsequent meeting on your own business. Anyone from the public who should speak?
Any subject?
Any subject, sir.
Got the lottery numbers?
If I did, I wouldn't be here.
What a guy.
I share with you.
No, you won't. Stewart, Resonate, 82 New Street. Let me start out by saying, who moved this meeting? And why weren't we notified? We pay eighteen thousand dollars a year in taxes in this town. And I turn on channel 77, and Mr. Patlike's talking, and I go over to the municipal building, and you're not there. When did that happen? And I think I'm kind of informed. There's no notice on the glass over there, the door is locked, the court's locked, the police are hiding behind the pulled down curtain in the police department. You can't even find a policeman there, except the guy walking out with a gun in the night, not wearing a badge or a uniform, no idea who that man is with that gun. So what I'm here about is, I ran an article, two articles in the paper about something called "Street Cop Training Incorporated." And what it said was something to the effect of be the calmest person in the room with a plan to kill everyone. That's what it said. And the state comptroller wants to know who's paying for this. Well, of course, we are the taxpayers. So I filed an open with the police department to see if they have a plan to kill everyone. I'm a Vietnam veteran. Let me tell you something about killing everyone, have a plan to kill everyone. The Niloan massacre resulted in 523 deaths, because somebody down there in South Vietnam ran around saying, "Kill them all, let God sort them out." 523 innocent men, women, and children with that kind of mentality. The Wayne Police Department spent seventeen thousand, six hundred twenty-two dollars for street cop training, for them to advertise to have a plan to kill everyone. And you're contracting with the police department, and I know you're a cop, and I know you're a cop, and I don't hold that against you. But you know what I'm talking about. We've got people shooting up schools everywhere. When I was in Vietnam, they shot up an orphanage. They shot up a Red Cross orphanage. I take shooting up children as serious as anybody, whether you're a police officer or you're not. Okay? If I go by one of your schools and somebody's shooting it up, you're going to find me face down, because I'm not putting up with it. And I'm not putting up with the police department that is paying people to teach police officers have a plan to kill everyone. That's outrageous. And they paid seventeen grand for this outrage. We've got a problem with guns, and you know it, and I know it, and everybody knows it. And we can't do a damn thing about it, because some of you got to have your guns. Are you wearing a gun tonight? Are you wearing a gun tonight?
I'm not going to talk about it.
Right, I know you're not going to talk about it. You've got three guys outside with a gun. God knows what's in their police cars. Some of us are pretty sick and tired of it. Some of us have faced down guns before, not as a soldier somewhere in the streets of our city, in the front seat of a tow truck, at two o'clock in the morning in a crack alley to bring in a triple A, but when they got robbed. It's not a joke, and it's not funny, and we're getting sick of it. So here's the deal, man. I want to know what this police department is going to do about this gun problem. Because I listened to the chief last night talk about his budget, and I went back over your budget, March 16th. You don't have anything in here about what you're paying the police department. I want to know what equipment you're running around with. I contacted your office last year, and I asked you about flashbang grenades. I know a little about flashbang grenades. They'll burn the damn building down. If you call the police because something goes wrong, is this department that are bringing flashbang grenades with a plan to be the calmest person in the room and kill everyone? That's what I want to know. I'm furious about this, because it's just going on and on and on and on. We had a cop shot down in Tennessee. Did you see that footage? Kid's on his fourth watch, 24 years old, shot in the head, fighting for his life right now, because we got this problem with guns. Sick and tired of it, and this idea that you can go over to the building tonight, Mr. Patlike's on channel 77 live from March 16th, and you go over there and there's not even a sign on the window. Who changed this meeting? Have a blessed evening, everyone.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Move close, see no one.
Second.
Sorry, I'm still absorbing.
Your business, your business. Board member comments?
I would just make one comment for the record. I am retired. I'm no longer part of Wayne Police Department. I'll put that on the record. All right? We'll leave it at that.
I'll also comment on that. I'm also retired police officer. I'm no longer active.
I left my gun home.
Is there a motion to, we will be going into executive session for about 10 or 15 minutes. For a personnel matter, we will be coming back out to take action on just the one personnel item. All right, so. Motion. Thank you. All right, motion to?
Vote.
Mr. Fataal?
Yes.
Mrs. Giordano?
Yes.
Mrs. Kazan?
Yes.
Mrs. Rigoloso?
Yes.
Mrs. Wenting?
Yep.
And Mr. Patlike?
Yes.
Motion carries. Just one thing to the Board. Being that there's going to be construction down there, and we're going to get through it out, we're going to have our executive sessions up here. We'll let you know if we can do the next meeting down there.
I'll check into the-
Yeah, once we, once the administration knows what's going on there, we're leaving up here instead of the Board office. We're going to look into, we're not going to have dinner anymore. All right? Community meetings are going to go promote for a couple of months, only because it's too difficult here. And also, we're going to look when we're at town hall, if you have executive session in the mayor's conference room, and we also have the clerk's conference room. We need two rooms. All right? So we're going to look into that. So it's going to be a changing, a moving target here in the next few months, at least, if not the rest of the year. All right? Just so everybody knows. Motion to close.
I'll go second.
Mrs. Kazan?
Yes.